Hello and welcome to the Tuesday, May 28, 2024, meeting of the Air Planning Board. Evidence, an official opening, I must read. This meeting, hearing of the Air Planning Board will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation via Zoom is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in a specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. This meeting will be live on Zoom. The public may access the proceedings by joining Zoom, meeting ID number 833-6548-0732, or by calling 929-205-6099. For additional information about remote participation, please contact Danny Ruiz, Town Planner, at DRuiz@air.ma.us, or 978-772-8220, extension 144, prior to the meeting. First item is to approve the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve the agenda.
Seconded.
Any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none. Julie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Nathan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. It's unanimous. The first item is One New England Way. The applicant is, this is Nusoya. The applicant is not here, and they've requested a continuance to the July 9th Planning Board meeting.
And let me just context.
Please do. Provide context.
The, the application that's before us is for a minor modification, but due to the fact that the variance for this project lapsed.
Right.
They had to, they have to reapply to the ZBA for a variance on the height. The next meeting for the ZBA is going to be on June 26th, so the applicant is going to be continuing out till July 9th.
Right. May I make a motion?
Please do, sir.
May I make a motion that the public meeting for One New England Way, map 17, lot 18, the minor modification of the site plan decision, applicant, Tetra Tech owner, Nusoya Foods USA LLC, be postponed until the Planning Board meeting of July 9th, 2024.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Julie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Nathan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you. Our next item is Washington Street Panther Place. Joe, if you would step up, please. And just use, just say your name and address and your usual thing.
Joe Levine, Air Development.
Welcome, Joe. Will you set this up for us, Danny?
Yes. So, Joe has requested a release of the covenant for lots 19, 20 of Brig Circle and lots 1 and 2 on Gaskin Lane. The DPW, as part of the covenant release, the DPW has to go out there and do inspections on the site. The DPW did provide us with a letter for this covenant request. There are, and so if, do you want me to read through, read the letter that the DPW gave?
I'm happy to do it.
Sure.
I'm sorry. May 21st, 2024, Air Planning Board, One Main Street, Air Mass, 01432, regarding the covenant release lots 19 and 20 of Brig Circle and lots 1 and 2 of Gaskin Lane, Panther Place subdivision. Dear Board members, developer of the Panther Place subdivision has requested the release of the covenants on the subject lots. At this time, the subdivision is substantially constructed. All water and sewer infrastructure, there remains site work, including, but not limited to drainage grading, curving, sidewalk, lighting, and top course paving. All water and service, sewer service line stubs have been installed. It is my understanding that there are 26 lots in the subdivision and six have been released of their covenants, leaving 20 lots currently under covenant for the construction of the subdivision. Lots 19 and 20 have been substantially constructed, while lots 1 and 2 are in the early stages of construction. Additionally, developer plans to install curving sidewalks and finish the stormwater basin in Brig Circle during this construction season. Based on the above, we recommend allowing the release of lots 19 and 20 of Brig Circle, but no further covenant release until the remaining construction of Brig Circle is substantially complete, open for an I.E., curving sidewalk construction of Brig Circle into the school and the rain gardening turnaround, closed per en. As further covenants are released, there may come a time to switch to cash certainty per en, like Riley Jane Farm, closed per en, to cover remaining work. If you have any questions or require any additional information, please feel free to contact me. Sincerely, Don Vonskowick, P.E., Town of Air, Director of Public Works.
Thank you, sir. Joe, you got, you got this?
Yeah.
And?
No, it's fine. You know, Dan was there, and we went over stuff. I don't have anything. Dan's been fine. You know, I was, I told him the truth. I was trying to ask for 1 and 2, more of a convenience of your time, so we don't have to come back. If Dan thinks this is in the best interest of the town to hold off, I'm not, I'm not planting my flag on that, so. But 19 and 20 is great, would be important, so yeah.
Okay, thanks. Do we need to have a vote for the finding, for the release of the two lots, the 19 and 20?
Yes, exactly.
So, let's see if I can try to phrase it. I, I move to approve the release of the covenant on lots 19 and 20 of the Panther Place subdivision as described in our agenda.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Julie?
Yes.
Nathan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Congratulations, and good luck with the remaining work.
One second.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Joe.
Kidding me, I would say, Joe, we should spend more time like this.
So, we need to, we, the 33rd Street, 33 Third Street has been open. We need, do we need any further language to open it?
No, so actually, it's 27-29 Harvard Road.
Oh, oh, mine is, okay. Oh, sorry, I got an old one. All right. Pardon me, sir.
All right. So.
27 and 29 Harvard Road, this is our next item. Okay, 27 and 29. Do we need any kind of votes, or we've already opened and we're continuing?
Opened and continued.
So, let's welcome the representative.
Yes, good evening, Board members. Attorney Tom Gibbons for 27 and 29 Harvard Road LLC. Danny, I don't know if you want to give a summary, or I, but it's been since October of last year that we were here.
Yeah, I can give a quick summary. So, in October of last year, Tom Gibbons and I had a conversation regarding the zoning for this project, and on whether or not the zoning that was done by the citizens' petitions actually went fully through and actually rezoned the properties. And based on the fact that the zoning map was never adopted at town meeting, the rezoning never actually, never actually occurred. So, that's why we pushed this off until this town meeting, this April, the April town meeting, so that the zoning map could be updated, showing the rezoning from general residence to general business. That was adopted, and so now we're at the point that they could come back and finish the application for the site plan and special permit. At the, in the October meetings, we had gone through the, the updated site plan, so that was handled and gone through. So, we really were just kind of waiting on the rezoning, the rezoning.
Right.
And to just go through the draft decision.
Okay. And do we need to have two separate votes for site plan and special permit in order? Okay. And is there anything for us to discuss before we get to that point?
I think, just turn it over to you guys, comments.
So, I think everything, you know, we, on October 10th, we had the, the site plan presentation by Cal. I made a presentation on the special permit. So, I think we were all set. It was just a matter of updating the plan, which Cal did a couple of days later.
Yep.
So, I think we're there. I know that you only have four members here tonight, so I'm hoping that, does anybody have any issues with the special permit? And if so, then I might ask for a continuance, but if I sense that there is no concern with the special permit for the use of flag.
None here.
I'm sorry, just like seeing attorneys now, I'm only kidding. I'm, I'm perfectly fine with what we stand.
Yeah, so we understand your concern, but I have, I think we're on good ground here.
Okay.
I think we're at a point where we can move on.
I appreciate that. Then we'll move forward.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
What's the right language? What's the verb here?
So, just before we, we move to that. With, yes, so, the decision that I sent over to Attorney Gibbons, I believe you had one comment, which was on general condition number?
Number five.
Yes. So, it was applicant must obtain compliance with all zoning requirements before building permit is issued. This is kind of just a general condition that I have running on all the others, and I kind of updated this decision for your purposes, because it was kind of an older one. There's no, there's no real site work or anything going on, so I updated it in a, in a way to, to fit your, the application for this. So, that is kind of just one of the running general conditions that I have in all the other projects.
Yeah.
So, it's not specific to this project. I know that you're not applying for any building permits.
Right, that's all I wanted to make clear, that there isn't any building permits.
Yeah, so there is no building permits, and we do know that. It's just a general condition.
That's fine, thank you.
Yep. Don't the general conditions follow with the property, not with this applicant? So, this is for future applicants, should they want to do it?
Yes, yeah, so, so this.
Just want to be clear on why the language is there.
Yeah.
For the general public, it's just, you know, it's great that we're doing it now, but it's for the perpetuity of the property.
Sure.
Because, you know, as much as I hate to admit it, property is going to probably outlive me.
Yeah. Yeah, so, I mean, they're.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that. You're fine with that. Yes, so I think if we want to just kind of go through the find, the findings, just to make sure we're all set with the findings.
So, that's section four.
Yep.
Should I read them into the record?
I, I don't think we need to read them.
Okay, no, then we don't need to.
I think it's kind of to see, just to make sure, is everyone okay with the findings on the, on there? It just kind of lists the site plan ones, which we go through for the requirements for each of those, that it meets all the findings for site plan, as well as all the findings for the criteria, for the special permit criteria, the 1 through 6 of the Arizona bylaws, and then a description of the property and the uses.
Okay, great.
I trust that the numbers are correct, as we do the math.
Okay.
One question.
Yes, sir. Nathan?
Is there, what plan are we referencing? Is that in here?
Yes, yep, I have it up here. It is the existing condition plan, so it's under materials number three, so it's, so it's number one. It's dated July 2023, revised through October 13, 2023.
Nathan, would you like to give a stab at forming the motion for the site plan?
Yep, and so the motions are right here. Sure.
Oh, where are they? What page? Oh, it's right there.
How many doesn't read it?
Oh, someone's doing the homework.
I should have volunteered for this one.
You can get special permit, okay?
Yeah, I would like to. It's just, I should reference the address as well. I move that we approve the site plan for 27-29 Harvard Road, dated October 13, 2023. Subject to the standard conditions and special conditions numbered in this decision, and this decision is dated 5/28/24. And we don't have any additional conditions in the meeting.
Nope. Thank you, Nathan. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Julie?
Yes.
Nathan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Site plan is approved. I need a motion for the special permit approval. I will make, I might as well just throw myself in here. I make a motion for the approval of the use special permit from section 5.2 of the Table of Use Regulations, class of U 6.2, enclosed fabrication pursuant to subsection 320-3.4, special permit subject to the standard conditions and special conditions numbered in this decision. And that would be, of course, for the property located at 27-29 Harvard Road.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? Julie?
Yes.
Nathan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I'll get you an updated one, and then I'll get in touch with you.
Very good. Thank you. Have a good night, guys.
Have a good one.
Thank you.
That brings us to 33 Third Street.
And this is the last meeting I was not in attendance at.
Did you do the moment, did you?
Oh, no, I was not at the sidewalk. Excuse me.
Yeah, you were not at the sidewalk.
I was not at the sidewalk.
Okay.
Thank you. We were discussing, we're fine.
You could still vote, right?
Yeah, yes, yes. I just wanted to be clear that I was not at the sidewalk.
Hello, sir.
Good evening. Brandon Ducharme, Dave D. Ross Associates, also here with Dan Aho. At our last meeting, we had submitted and kind of gone over the final plans, and then left you folks with some time just to review those changes. Also, we had a chance to kind of look at the draft decisions sent over. We've, we've gone through those. Don't have any comments on those.
And before we talk about the findings, Danny, there weren't any special conditions or anything significant for us to discuss, right? We're, we're good on this, right?
Let me just, so, on the stormwater one, there were three special conditions that.
Okay, let's look at that.
That's ran, and I think we should discuss.
Let's do that. What page? Direct me to.
So, page, it's page seven.
Oh, okay.
Under section 5, special conditions. These are, I put these in the special conditions portion because these are under the, oh, you're on the site plan one.
Oh.
There's a separate.
Oh, it's a separate document.
Yep, right over there.
No, that, oh.
Yep.
Thank you.
So, the reason these are under special conditions is these are from our stormwater regulations, and there are some specific condition, there's some, some of the regulations that are within the, within our regulations that aren't specific to every project.
Mm-hmm.
They're only specific to some projects, so I think these are something that we should discuss, to whether or not we want them in this project, you know, so I think we kind of should just go through them.
Okay. So, the first one would be a stormwater maintenance fee or bond may be required to ensure the operations and maintenance of the stormwater system. The fee or bond would be based on the cost estimate providing the value of five years of the O and M of the stormwater system. This fee or bond shall be in place prior to receiving the final certificate of occupancy from the building commissioner.
So, with this project being single-family homes, and they're going to all be owned by separate people, I don't think this, I don't think this special condition is, you know, should be required for this one project. So, just so that everyone knows, this is a template draft version of the stormwater management permits with all these conditions that will carry over to other projects, and as we go through them, we'll remove the special, the special conditions that don't.
Yeah, case by case, and then we can do that, but that's why they're here. It's not punitive, it's just, right. Does anyone feel a hankering to apply a fee or bond on this?
Mr. Chair, I think we're bringing this up because we have a unique situation where this development requires stormwater management. Typically, that's not in.
Yeah, and site plan review. It was one of those weird situations where they triggered because of the land clearing plus, plus the site plan review and the stormwater management. It was typically, single-family homes don't require site plan review.
Yes. So, the maintenance, and, you know, well, is the maintenance then going to be captured in the deed? Is that?
Yeah.
The O and M, and therefore it's enforced by what?
Yeah, so, the, the O and M is actually required to be, so, under condition number 15, 14 and 15, so the stormwater management permit decision, this one has to be recorded at the Registry of Deeds, and the approved O and M also needs to be recorded at the Registry of Deeds. So, we could have a special condition, which we've, we had discussed kind of in previously about requiring that this, the O and M just gets referenced in each of these deeds, so that everyone knows that it's got to be a part, that it's in there.
May I ask a question, Mr. Chair?
Of course.
I don't have a copy of the plan, as a part of me, and that's not, doesn't, shouldn't determine. Each one of the individual homes has its own stormwater?
Yes.
It's not a common stormwater for three homes?
That's kind of the uniqueness, especially we talk about this. There is no, like, homeowner association or anything. If you're going to be individual, homeowners are just going to maintain it the same as they would a septic system.
I, I just want to make, I just want to put it on the table that anybody who happens to be in TV land, we're not asking three people to not be responsible for a single system. We're asking each individual homeowner is made aware that they have a stormwater system that they have to do some maintenance on, which is basically rake it and stuff like that.
Correct.
So, yeah, thank you. Just wanted to be clear.
Yep. So, we can strike that one?
Yeah. Well, so, so, I believe.
So, I would move to make a motion that under section 5, special conditions, and I want to get the title correct, so bear with me, please, of the major stormwater management permit for lots 1, 2, 3, and 33 Third Street, Air Mass, we remove the special condition number one, requiring a stormwater maintenance fee or bond required, et cetera.
Seconded. Discussion? Yes, please.
I get, I get the example of the septic tank. The septic tank is going to force somebody to act on it because it's going to back up. Just a little concerned that there isn't an enforcement mechanism or a trigger, like, is this thing going to fail?
There's, there's enforcement, so.
Okay.
The, I apologize, so the.
Actually, could you identify?
O and M plan will have to have several, it has the two inspections in here, or two reports to be submitted here, where those don't get done, it is reported to your planning office, my office, and DPW, one of the three of us, or whatever, will ensure that those are done, and if those inspections are not done, then it'll come back to this board for enforcement.
Okay.
So, again, kind of to relate it to like a septic, you know, at point of sale, there's a Title V inspection that happens to kind of catch that. The way that this is now is, yeah, there's going to be annual inspections, or, you know, there's a, there's a timeframe, and they work, it has to be done and submitted.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, that's, that's my concern. Thank you. Agreed. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Julie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Nathan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
So, I would just, I think we should, to add a special condition is that the, the O and M, the approved O and M shall be referenced in the deed of each of these lots.
May I, may I ask? Point of clarity. The town will receive a copy of the O and M also?
Yes, so we do have one.
Okay, good. That's all I want to make sure.
Yeah, we do have it.
Having had to enforce these for condo complexes, they get a little tough to do sometimes.
What about the other two special conditions, Danny?
Condition number two?
Yeah.
So, condition number two, so in the case where the town of the air takes ownership of the project from the owner, a maintenance fee shall be required. Any annual fee will be based on the estimated value of the annual routine of O and M and stormwater system. Additional fee may apply, and should be additional maintenance to be required. So, on this one, I don't see a, a situation in which the town would ever take over a single-family home's stormwater system, so I don't think we should, this one needs to be applied to this project.
Okay. We have to go through the same thing?
I mean, I, so, we don't, we don't have to move and vote, because we can do it at the end, all in one.
Oh, okay.
Once, once we've discussed everything, at the end, we'll, we'll approve it, based on the conditions added or removed during the meeting.
And does that, everyone clear on condition number two?
Yes.
And what about number three?
Certificate of completion shall be recorded. So, I would say yes.
That stays, right.
Because they have to prove that it was all built and in conformance, and they submit that information to the building commissioner.
Okay. And then you requested a, a new special condition. The.
The approved.
Approved O and M shall be included in the deeds for each lot? Is that the idea?
Shall be referenced.
Shall be referenced.
In each.
In each deed?
Deed of the, of the three lots.
Each deed of the three lots.
Is, okay, clear. Duplicate to 14 and 15? You want the as-built?
No, 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 I want the actual O and M reference, the reference from the deed of the, once they record the O and M at the Registry of Deeds, I want that reference within each of the, the deeds that are going to be going to each of the homeowners, so that they have an easy.
Can I translate that?
Yes.
So, everything recorded at the registry gets booked and paged?
Yes.
Book 27, page 62.
Okay.
So, the O and M gets booked, that gets included in each one of the individually recorded deeds, so the homeowner can't say, I don't know where it is, because it's right there in their deed.
Yeah. It just makes it much easier for people to get a hold of it, as opposed to exactly what Jeff said, you know, oh, I don't know what it is, I don't know where it is, I don't know how to find it. It makes it much easier.
Which is very different than, I don't want to do.
Yeah, and it makes it easier, so if a new person buys the home, like, so that every time it gets sold, it's not something that gets lost in translation.
Or if it goes through a foreclosure, or.
Yeah.
Or a, a non-friendly sale, you want to have that information referenced.
So, can we take these in turn now?
Yes.
So, I think we should start with the motion for the site plan approval for 33, lots 1 through 3 for 33 Third Street. I make a motion that we approve the site plan as delineated in the 5/28/24, what do you call this document?
Site plan approval.
Site plan approval document for lots 1 through 3 on 33 Third Street.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Julie?
Yes.
Nathan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Site plan is approved. Now, this next one's a little trickier to construct for the, you want to try this?
Move to approve the major stormwater.
One second, sorry. Who seconded that other motion?
I did.
Okay, gosh, just one, okay, sorry.
Oh, yeah, you got to write these down, touch it.
Just, just while I'm writing.
So, I move to approve the major stormwater management permit, as discussed, for lots 1 through 3 at 33 Third Street, and I'll point out that we have struck under section
And I'll point out that we have struck under section five, special conditions one and two.
And added.
And added, a condition that the approved O and M shall be referenced in each deed of the three lots.
Seconded.
Great. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Julie?
Yes.
Nathan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Excellent. It's approved. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
One second, I'll, I'll contact you after I've gotten all the signatures and updated it.
Do we need a motion to close the public?
Yes.
Do we need a motion to close the public?
Yes.
Do we actually need to make a motion for the previous one too, to close that? Twenty-seven, twenty-nine?
Move to close the public hearing for thirty-three Third Street, map thirty-four, parcel one thirty-six.
I second the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Julie?
Yes.
Nathan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Jonathan, the chair votes aye.
Given the belt and suspender approach of doing our work.
Yes.
I move to approve.
Move to close.
Move to close, especially for twenty-seven and twenty-nine Harvard Road, map thirty-five, parcels twenty-one and twenty-two.
Seconded by Julie. Excellent. Any discussion? Julie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Nathan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, great.
It's like we want to get this done.
And then, our next up, ninety-one Groton Harvard Road.
Do we need to do a continuance of motion?
It's already been opened.
Okay, great. It's already open, we'll have a continuance motion at, at the end. I would like Danny to set us, come on up, Lynn Hood.
No, I can, we got extra.
We got extra chairs? Yeah, bring, yeah, that's perfect.
Everyone gets a comfy chair tonight.
Why not? Kind of roll around.
I ask you to set this up and especially if you give us an idea of what we can actually accomplish tonight, that would be great. Thank you, sir.
So, on, so last Monday, the, we had a meeting with GPR.
Yep.
It was myself, Heather, Dan and Matt with LeMott and Nick.
Nick, yep.
Nick. Just to kind of go through the comments and the responses, we managed to, you know, iron out a lot of the issues. We, we settled on some of the things, like discussing about the edge of the property, on what we're going to do, on whether or not a fence or a Jersey barrier. So they're going to be providing us updated information for all these responses and additional comments, additional information that we requested at that meeting. I think at, at this point, what we can do is discuss setting up a site visit.
Yes, definitely.
And I think that's really it, unless there's something else you, you think we, you want to discuss.
Well, I guess more specifically, I want to talk a little bit about the, you know, the solution to the fencing, having a barrier at the top of the slope a little bit more. I'm not sure how much of the.
If I may, and I, I do want to get.
I want to hear it too, go ahead, Jeff.
But I'm going to also say that we've had a big night tonight and it's hard for me and my brain to discuss a solution without actually standing on the premises.
I got you.
So I'm happy to, but I, I get the other side of the coin is it's somewhat of a academic discussion at this point.
But you know what? I'm going to ask Lynn Hood just to talk about it because at least I want to have the image in my head of what you intend when we go out to see it. And yes, we'll redis, we'll rediscover it when we get there and it'll become clearer to us.
Especially because they're also going to have to provide us with an actual spec sheet.
Yes.
That, you know, DPW is going to have to review and everything. So that's why it's a detail sheet on that. So that's why he, you know, discussing it will be helpful for you when we get to the site visit. But then also seeing it on the plan will, will be very helpful.
Okay.
Okay.
Lynn Hood, you have the floor.
Thank you. So following the last meeting and, you know, going back to the drawing board and talking with the team, the solution we came up with is, you know, the Jersey barrier slash waste block lined in the way that, I don't have the.
Yeah, I can pull up the plan really quickly here.
Essentially lining up the, the top of slope around the, the edge of gravel area surrounding the site on the, the back portion there. And the waste block slash Jersey barriers will be spaced out in a way so that no vehicles can pass through. And, you know, on top of the Jersey barrier, we're proposing this stone and dry mulch berm right in front and in between it. So that the idea is that, you know, as you have this uncontrolled sheet flow that's coming down from this existing gravel path, driveway patch, coming down, sheet flowing uncontrolled, it hits the mulch, it gives a chance, it gives it a chance to catch all the debris, sediment, slows down the water, and then there's going to be a layer of stone underneath to make sure that the water gets, you know, filtered.
Percolating through.
And slowly percolating through, sort of mimicking the, you know, the general existing conditions, making sure that it's actually being dispersed properly and not creating channelized flow down the slope. That is like the, you know, the main thing that we want to talk about.
So for clarity, I'll get to you, one second. When you say in front of, so I want to note, if we're working from this to this, is it Jersey barrier and then the berm as you described, or is the berm then the Jersey barrier then the cliff?
So the Jersey barrier is going to sit like so, the berm is going to go right up and around it.
And the berm faces the edge or the opposite?
It would be the upflow side, not the downflow side.
So it's going to be on the inside?
Correct.
That's what I'm asking. So the berm will be on the inside, then there's the Jersey barriers.
Correct.
Okay, that's what I wanted clarity on, thank you.
And Danny, if you wouldn't mind showing where we proposed that. So that's going to go.
So it's going to go along the edge, so if you see the, this gravel right there, it's going to go along here.
Keep going.
It's going to keep going all the way around to right here.
Stop, right there, to where the berm is, to where the Cape Cod berm will be.
Yeah, right there.
So it'll go all the way around. The reason for the stone is so that water, snow, et cetera, doesn't push the mulch back. We don't want just the mulch to be there. So you'll see from the front, you'll still see the top of the barriers, you'll see the big spaces between the barriers, and then in front of that will be, you'll see mulch and mulch edge around the whole thing. You won't see the stone unless you get right up on it to look in between or past the mulch because the mulch will cover the stone.
What happens over time? Does the mulch get recharged or you just expect plant life to vegetate that mulch and form like a more living solid barrier? What?
I, I think it's just going to stay as mulch. You know, I mean, there'll be some plant life in it, but mostly it's going to stay as mulch.
When you say stay as mulch, what I mean is like, mulch doesn't last forever. I mean, it's mulch and then it's gone, is it replaced?
It'll have to be included in the O and M.
Yeah, we'll put it in the O and M, but I mean, if you're putting six inches to a foot deep of mulch on top of stone to hold it in place, it's going to stay there.
Okay.
You'll see that there's a lot of mulch on the slope in places already.
All right. One of the, one of the issues open is the treatment of, of stormwater.
Keep that up, please.
Yeah, I'm just gonna.
Did you share it?
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm trying to do.
Okay. And this is another thing where I'd like clarity and my colleagues can jump in. There was some discussion about whether the regrading necessitating stormwater treatment over here, and I just want to get clear. Is this, this berm, Jersey barrier combination your proposed solution to that runoff or is this in addition to, or complementary to that solution?
It's somewhat complement or supplementary to it.
Okay.
I want to kind of touch upon the, the grading area a little bit.
Okay.
So, you know, as, as proposed only, we are providing a drainage improvement to the existing site. Currently, the, the site just sheet flow uncontrolled, you know, the whole thing coming down the side of the slope. By providing an onsite stormwater system, you know, the first thing we're doing is reducing the total impervious area on site. Secondly, we're providing treatment for, you know, approximately, I want to say, you know, maybe a third.
Third, third plus.
Of the disturbed existing area. And we're also reducing the peak runoff rates for up to and including hundred-year storm event.
Okay.
So, you know, these are all the improvements that we're providing as design. You know, from a regulatory and analytical standpoint, the Jersey barrier berm is not going to provide us with, you know, a quantitative number of, you know, improvement that we can put on paper.
Right.
But it is still a supplementary improvement to an existing site that has no, you know, treatment whatsoever. You know, we feel that, you know, by doing all the things that we're, we're currently doing, as well as in addition to the mulch berm and the Jersey barrier, we feel that we've done, you know, to the maximum practicable. Because we're kind of stuck in a situation where we don't have, you know, we can't find paramaterial.
I'm sorry, what material?
Paramaterial in the soil. As we're digging down, there's no, you know, other suitable area that we can potentially put in a treatment that can give you that, you know, eighty percent TSS removal that's typically required per the stormwater handbook.
All right, so I, I just got to, I got to, I got to step in here. So at our meeting that we had last Monday.
Yep.
I specifically told you that we want to see an option as to how you're addressing this area. And that we were, you had four people in there, you had myself, you had Heather, you had Matt and Dan, all telling you specifically, we wanted to see an option on how you are addressing this. And that using this berm was not going to be enough of an argument towards this waiver.
I understand.
We, and I just want to make sure, that's why I'm just making sure that everyone in the, on the board understands this as well, that we need to be able to see the options on what you're saying is, would be capable, would, how you guys would be capable of addressing that issue. If it is something that need, that goes above and beyond, that would cause more, more impervious area to offset that, they, we just need to see the options before the board.
Right.
So I just want to make sure that that's clear.
And prior to giving you guys the option, we just want to hear the board's opinion. That is, you know.
So, and once again, I told you this at the meeting, we're not going to bring up the boards asking them for opinions on the waiver.
Why?
Well, one, I told you, we want to see the options first.
So.
So if the board does not have the options before them to see what it is would be, is it cost hindrance, is it like, we want to be able to see what is before us, what the options are, and all four of us at that meeting specifically told you that.
I concur, by the way, with Danny.
Because at this point, waivers are a last ditch effort to show us, we can't meet it and this is the reason why we can't meet it. So show me the options saying, these are the options that we came up with, this is going to bring up more impervious area, this is, we can't extend the infiltrator rows, we can't bring those, make them bigger. Give us all the options that, as to why you can't make that, you can't make this work and why you cannot address this area of stormwater. I told you that we're not going to bring up the option to the board without that.
Okay, so we have gone out, and I know you don't have the soil logs yet because we wanted to have this meeting before we did any modifications to the plans. But Dan, if you will outline the area on Plan North, which is actual north, above the building itself.
Yep.
That area, right out to the road, that whole area out to the road. I did test holes for the septic system back in November, December. We did test holes out there, and as we came through that whole area, there's anywhere from twelve inches to, in one case, up in the corner, I think it was seventy inches, but that was up on the slope and it's three feet higher, it's off your, off your plan.
Oh, off the slope.
No, no, in the front.
Oh.
Right up in there, in the top corner. So right, yeah, right there. So it's like several feet higher than the, the gravel parking area. And so when you got level to the gravel parking area, you had nothing and you're now asking water to go uphill to go into that area. See the circle in the center of the building?
Yep.
Right there? That's exposed ledge on the surface. And as I got closer to that, obviously, that ledge became the surface. If you look at the test holes where the septic system are.
Yeah.
Right up in there, that was the area where we were able to get testing for the septic system. If you look at the five holes that are right in there around the leaching area, the three that are not in that leaching area had.
Of this one?
No, no.
Or you're talking about these five?
I'm sorry, and the, of soil absorption area. The three that surround that, varying depths to a fill to ledge, right to ledge. Now, if you look down the slope, off the slope, either in the back where the machine went off the edge or down its, the south on this side here, there's exposed ledge in many places around the toe of that slope. We have in the neighborhood of thirty-five feet of fill. As deep as I was able to dig, we were finding fill right on top of the ledge. Talked to, you know, the, the landscaper that'd been there for a long time and he was under the understanding that the guy had just filled and filled and filled in the property over the years, and that's what we found. So by the stormwater management handbook, you cannot infiltrate into fill material. You can have naturally occurring material, you have to have two feet, and you can have bad soil around it, you can take that soil out and you can put sand in or gravel in and you can fill into that and infiltrate as long as the bottom area is natural.
Yep.
We're not finding that. We barely found it in that area there. You know, we're looking at, we might be able to expand that footprint by like one more row. And right now, we're meeting the requirements for what we look at as being the redeveloped area. This area of slope that you're talking about, we're taking a slope that's steep and then mellows out and we're making it so that it's more or less a consistent slope. It's still a gravel surface, it's a gravel surface now, it's proposed to be a gravel surface in the future.
And it's still redevelopment.
I understand you're saying that. So what we're more asking for here is that relief than the fact of gravel to gravel as, as being not redevelopment. The area, if we were to pave that area and put a structure in over there and bring it over into the, into the one more row of chambers, it's not going to then meet that area. We're going to be creating more impervious area than we have area to absorb it under the, under the stormwater management guidelines.
Yeah, and, and so this is, this is what I said to LeMott at the meeting, provide us, us with those options as to what you're saying could be done, but would be just, wouldn't really be helpful before the board makes any opinion on that. Because I don't want them making an opinion on something if they don't have information to back it up.
So Danny.
And just to touch on one more thing, the waiver request you guys are asking for, it specifically says for only the redevelopment portion of the site.
Right.
It's not really, you're asking for a fraction of the redevelopment portion of the site.
Because we have a difference of opinion on what redevelopment. So now I understand what your opinion of redevelopment.
Our stormwater regulations state that if you are altering, changing grades, it is considered redevelopment.
So Danny, part of the reason why we didn't want to give an option is because, like I said, that area is the only area that you can really do any sort of treatment that meets the stormwater handbook. Like Bruce said, potentially we could add another row at the end, but at that point, we're already kind of pushing the envelope of what's fill material and where we can actually treat the water. By adding another row, we're still not meeting the minimum, you know, what's required per the town of air stormwater regulations for that portion. So we could certainly add the other row, another row, pave the area, put up berm, and we're still not meeting it from analytical standpoint. That's why we want to come talk to the board a little bit more from the standpoint of, look, we can't, you know, we can't feasibly make it work even with the expansion of the additional row. Is there any way that the board would entertain with all these, you know, drainage improvement that we're already currently proposing on site, that, you know, the board would entertain the waiver as it stands?
I want to see the options in writing. Jeff, you go.
Yeah. So again, I'm at a position where I think I fully understand the challenges you guys are up against.
Mm-hmm.
But I'm also dealing with this in two dimensions and in an academic, in an academic fashion.
Yep.
And I am not in any way, shape or form capable of doing stormwater calculations. I rely upon our DPW for that, and I think they're very good at it. So I couldn't tell you either way right now if I would entertain waivers or not that you're asking for. Just to be, you know, flat out, I think a site walk would be very, very helpful.
I agree.
I'm not in a position to present options. I'm not an engineer.
I think there's, there's two issues here. One is, one, one is the, the precision with which you're able to do a stormwater calculation, which sounds like to me is, is there are other elements that help, but, but they're not, they aren't measurable, is, is how I understand it.
Yes.
So I, I think, you know, so, so there are, you know, and perhaps we can agree with the help of the DPW that these are directionally correct. And the other, the other piece of this is, on the developable land, it's, I guess I want to weigh this against the, the value of a business in the town of air. And what, what should we, you know, there's, there's value to, there's value to that and so long as potentially, you know, in, in an area where the math isn't going to be precise, can our, can our DPW help us with that? The other, the other thing is, it sounds like what you're asking for, Danny, is maybe not solutions, but what are the hindrances? I think you guys have talked through what the hindrances are, and I'm curious if that would satisfy the request in part or in whole for options to, to just write down what those hindrances are to a, a precise answer of stormwater management. Makes sense?
Mm-hmm. I think so. I, I guess I feel I would like to see the options in writing, then I can sit down with Dan Van Skalkwick and Matt Hernan and go through it. I can't go through with, you know, assertion, vocal assertions. I need to have something on paper to say, Dan, what's the story?
That's fine.
And then we could take it from there.
We wanted to get to this point.
Okay, good.
Because we weren't at that point at the end of the meeting the other day, so we wanted to get to that point.
Okay, good.
There are a couple of things that you want to hit upon.
I believe that we already understand that we're revising the, the waiver request to include a few additional things, like the stormwater easement, as well as the bicycle facility. The dumpster location, I think, I believe that was brought up during the last meeting. Talking with the applicant and landowner, we're proposing to put a dumpster location directly behind the building, the proposed building.
Back here?
No. So right, right up where your, the pavement ends and where that tank is, you see that's there, right, right, right against the building, right there, yeah? And our feeling is, is that the building totally screens it.
Yep.
We want to make sure you guys are okay with that, so we're not putting up a fence around something that doesn't make sense.
Okay.
The truck will hit the fence anyway.
Exactly. And then, Dan, if you could slide that plan down just a little bit, down the other way so we can see the northern border. Okay, there was a, there were comments in staff review that the property should be. Excuse me?
No, I was, allergies, like no one's saying allergies today, right?
Oh, no, this, spring has been crazy. That there should be, the gaps that you see there, there's one right where Dan's at, another one there, that those gaps should be filled. All of the vegetation, with the exception of the two trees right under the rose compass that are on the property line, all of the vegetation is on our site, on our client's site. The DPW slash the transfer station...
It's paved to the edge.
Is paved right to the property line. We think that there, the, the limited, in the low brush that grows up and through there naturally is more than enough vegetation, and we're not sure, you know, we're going to have this beautiful building up in here that's going to be landscaped in the front and hard to see. We don't understand why the applicant has to go and throw additional money into landscaping along the edge when it's already a vegetation, vegetated burn that's there for the most part. We have big trees in some places, we have other stuff in others. We don't see where, it's not called out for to have a oasis between one commercial business and another commercial business. And so we're just trying to understand how much the board really wants to have landscaping put into those areas. And again, the sidewalk will speak a million words. You don't need the answer now. I just, we, the things that are on our list that were comments that came from staff that we want to throw out to everybody be thinking about.
I can't believe you don't want to screen that beautiful building next door from the people working here.
Or, or the things that come flying over, you know, when you get to the sidewalk, you'll see where all the debris comes from.
Okay.
All right. So when would you like to do a sidewalk? Yeah, let's talk about that. We usually do these at Thursday mornings.
Thursday mornings.
At eight o'clock, that's typically what we do. So I think we're, we're looking for a Thursday morning before the next meeting, right? How about sooner than later, because then we can get stuff done and have plans into you.
Say how about two days?
Yeah, that's what I'm all about. That works for me. I don't know, Julie and Nathan?
Does that mean our notice, do we have, do any notice?
Yeah, does that mean?
Yeah, we would public, uh, we would post a notice for that.
That meets requirements.
That's tight, though. Could we post a notice and have it for this Thurs- this Thursday?
Oh, this Thursday?
No, we couldn't do that.
Not for this Thursday.
Do you, do you have to post a notice for a sidewalk?
We do.
Yeah, we do.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, we would have, we would have had to have posted it today, the sixth. So we, the next day we could do is the sixth.
Okay.
Or, I mean, unless you guys, the board wants to meet on another, I mean, do a site visit on another day.
Friday morning or? E-Day is fine by me, so, June 6th? Yep. June 6th just makes it a difficult time to have stuff in that you guys could review before the 11th.
Well, so actually, on that, we might as well talk, because, because I was actually going to bring that up as well. So we're going to have two members that are not going to be here for that meeting as well.
Yeah, that's going to be an issue, so.
So even if we jumped it up to Friday this week, we probably won't have a full quorum.
Sounds like a plan. Issue, yeah.
We just discovered that this evening.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll all be back for the sidewalk.
Sometimes we go on vacation, too.
Anywhere else? So we're talking June 6th?
June 6th, Thursday morning?
Yep, and we'll do it for eight o'clock. I'll get that, that posted.
Eight oh, and you're going to send reminder by email for this?
Yep.
Sidewalk? I just want, just remember everyone to wear, you know, tick protection and the usual stuff, because we will be out in the woods, going to go look around the side there.
Heather, what was that?
Sorry.
She, Heather wants to be able to join.
Yeah, I think so. I will recommend that we meet on the north side of the existing building.
Up here?
Up in that area.
Okay.
You'll have a table with coffee and donuts for it.
We'll have a table with coffee and donuts. Uh, we're going to park in front of the existing building, on the existing parking lot. I know that's against violation, regulation, but that's where we're going to park, because there's, there's trailers.
Yeah.
Yeah, right up, right up in that, no, 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 that's a lawn.
That's right here.
Keep on going north, right in there, that's where we'll park.
Park up there?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. And then we can kind of walk the surface, and then we can go down and around the underneath side. That's the idea. Okay. That's the plan.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
We'll do a walk. You mentioned either Jersey barriers and what was the other barrier?
Waste block. We'll show them to you when they're out there. They, they make up the...
Yeah, I understand that, I just didn't hear what Lamont was saying, so. My ears are aging.
As are mine. So it, it looks like we're looking for continuance, not to the next one, but two meetings out, because we're not going to have a sufficient number of people here, and you guys, it's okay with?
June 25th.
June 25th? There's nothing we can do, so. What it is, what it is. Yeah, I mean, I'd rather we discuss it now than to get, get there on the 11th and realize that we can't make any... Hundred percent. Yeah. Hundred percent.
So move to continue. Ninety-one, Groton Harvard Road, map thirteen line eight, to the planning board meeting on June 25th.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Julie?
Yes.
Nathan?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Mr. Chairman, may I request a minute or two to go clean out my head?
I was just going to say, well, I'm going to call, I'm going to call a five-minute recess is Stratton Hill off of Wright Road. A few, I want to talk about what's going to happen this evening, the order of, of things. So we are going to get a presentation of a new plan from the applicant. They'll give us the story, they'll talk about the changes, why they were made, what's going on, just the general outline and presentation of that. This evening, we will not go into the critical comments from either the DPW or Green International to give the applicant more time to respond to all those, because they haven't had a chance to respond to DPW yet. That will be deferred to the next meeting, because it's just simply logical. After the presentation, I will turn to my colleagues around the table and invite them for questions. When they've had the opportunity to ask their questions, I will open it up for public comment, and at that point, we will welcome anyone who wishes to ask questions or make comments to approach the table and to do so. There's one other thing before we begin, I want to clarify. I think there's a great deal of misunderstanding of what the role of the board is in terms of the subdivision. Our judgment is not about whether a plan or a project is good, bad, or indifferent. It is only to ensure that the plans are consistent with the laws and regulations. In this instance, we need to remember that the applicant can build housing on this site by right. That's not, that's not a question. That's not a question on the table, whether they can build housing here. The answer is yes, they can. And the only party here who can quote "block" this or take this off the table is the applicant. At this point, their responsibility is to show us and demonstrate to our satisfaction that they meet the regulations and bylaws, and it's our obligation to be sure that they do so, do so before we can make findings and make a finding of approval. During this process, there is, of course, back and forth and horse trading that eventually, in other, in our experience with other projects, tends to improve the project more to the satisfaction of the town and its citizens, and usually to everyone's satisfaction. But I just wanted to clarify just some of the fundamentals, so there's no, or there's less confusion going forward. With the, Danny, do you have anything you want to set up before we turn to the applicant? The applicant just go. I just asked the three, the three representatives to identify themselves by name before they start.
So Bob Collins, I'm the attorney to the applicant. To my left is Stan Dillis, the senior project engineer from Dillis and Roy. To my right is Frank McPartlin, who is also a project engineer from Dillis and Roy.
Thank you.
So with that having been said, the plan that you have before you follows the design of the design exercise that we discussed at the last hearing of the preliminary plan.
Just make sure I'm sharing. There we go.
Okay. We brought this design forward last November, at the end of the preliminary plan process, because we had been listening to the, many comments that were loud and clear, that there was a very strong desire to limit the development area to the area south of the power lines. So this plan does that. This site is approximately a hundred and fifty acres. What this plan does is create a limited development project in the truest sense under the open space residential bylaw, creating seventeen lots that would provide a location for thirty-four units of housing, occupying roughly ten acres of the one hundred and fifty acre site. There would be nine point seven acres south of the power lines that surround it as a, an aesthetic and vegetative buffer that would be gifted to the Town of Air. There is one hundred and twenty-one acres to the north of the power lines that would be gifted, we believe at this point, to the Commonwealth, the Mass Department of Fisheries and Wildlife, as a wildlife sanctuary, to back up to the four hundred and thirty-seven acres that my client previously donated to the Massachusetts Audubon Society. So the beauty and there's, forgive me, there's another ten acres of shoreline that will be a separate gift, separate from this, um, project, primarily so that my client can get a tax advantage.
Is that the Allison Mill T property?
Yes, yeah.
Thank you, sir, we were wondering that.
So that, I'm getting an appraisal on, that will be a separate gift that's unrelated to this. So at the end of the day, the beauty of this plan is that better than, I believe, eighty-five percent of the total site gets preserved, but the acreage that gets preserved augments this massive existing wildlife sanctuary that my client already donated. You'll end up having pretty close to six hundred acres of contiguous open space and wildlife habitat, which speaks to the goal that my client had in purchasing this site twenty-odd years ago, um, to actually preserve, he bought it to preserve most of it. At the time, the, the site was toured by the then Secretary of Environmental Affairs, Bob Durant, and there were different studies that had demonstrated that this particular site, both in the Groton and Airside, was the most important site worthy of preservation east of Worcester in the Commonwealth, because of the number of different and completely separate habitats and ecological land types. And it, it's through an accident of history that this site just stayed the way it has. So the limited development approach on this side and on the Groton side has essentially paid for the preservation of the property. The lots average twenty-two thousand square feet. They range in size from twelve thousand square feet to thirty-three thousand square feet, with an average of a little better than twenty-two thousand. They occupy roughly nine acres. The road itself occupies an acre, an acre of land. The road is nineteen hundred feet. Those of you that remember numbers will recall that the plan that was approved on this site quite a few years ago was better than a mile of road. So this really shortens the amount of roadway, but also the, the municipal expense in the future, because there's vastly less road to take care of. There'll be...
I believe it's about almost half?
Yes, yeah. Let, more than half, it's less than half, yeah. There'll be one sidewalk on one side. As the plan is submitted, there is also this walking path that we thought would be a nice amenity. Green International did not share our enthusiasm with that, so we're actually going to just continue the sidewalk along the roadway straight down and eliminate that.
Just for everyone's help, this is the path, that gray line is the path that the council's referring to, and what you're saying, no, instead, we're just going to have the sidewalk, right?
Straight down.
Correct.
May I, Mr. Chair? Just on this one. The path that's shown on the plan was going to be a gravel?
Yes, it was, yeah.
And we're going to end up with botuminous?
That's correct.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Just curious, just because, want to make sure?
Yeah. In addition, another nice accident, I guess, of history, the, the road for the approved subdivision that went off into the hinterlands was actually roughed in, and so the road that has been roughed in will actually serve kind of as a trailhead, I think, for people to be able to access the land that will, will be gifted to the Commonwealth. The one thing I don't recall, and forgive me, Frank, did we show an area of parking?
We have an area of parking up at the top of the...
Oh, there it is, forgive me, I should have seen it.
Open space area two, yeah, between lots ten and nine and ten.
And that connects to an existing trail.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that, and that actually sits almost on the road that's been roughed in.
It does, it does.
It's almost close to where the cut-through road is.
That's right. So it'll provide a, a place for, you know, people that want to actually hike, because you could spend, you could actually spend a couple of days hiking the site, a place for them to park. I did give you a, a letter with the waivers that we can discuss when the time comes. There may well be a couple of others. I think I covered everything that was on the green, um, analysis, but there may well be a couple that I missed, so I'll go through that and make certain by the time we get to that, that we've asked for all the different waivers that we need to. Couple of minor things that I just did want to say is I do believe that this plan is probably going to ultimately be the best example of what your open space bylaw can actually accomplish. When we were here fifteen years ago, you actually did not have that option, which was sad. Even, even so, however, my client even then was dealing with a limited development approach.
Give me one moment.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm going to ask that conversations in the room be halted so that everyone can hear what we're saying at the table. Thank you. Please continue.
So we were very pleased that you had adopted the open space bylaw, which motivated my client to submit a, a new plan that would shorten the roadway and augment the open space. If you think about the purposes that are laid out in your bylaw, this, as I say, it's the best example. It preserves important habitats, it provides the contiguous open space that the public will not only have access to, but will be able to enjoy forever. It provides a different type of housing than what is generally being built lately, and it preserves areas that are of environmental significance. It preserves all of the coastline that my client owns on the pond, and it will be there for people to be able to enjoy. The bylaw calls out fifty percent on open space. This actually will be more like eighty-five percent. And the bylaw does envision that it should encourage different types of housing types, so long as you approve it as such. So we have proposed duplexes in order to fit the number of units that we needed to pay for the site on, on nine acres. So there would be seventeen duplexes that would be comparable to the duplexes that my client is building for the over fifty-five development on the Groton side.
And this is a reduction in units, too?
It is, it is, yeah, we...
Reduced by three?
Yeah, I...
Three or four?
Three or four.
Depending on, depending on the submittal, we were thirty-seven or thirty-eight.
We're finally going to get to the first question I asked you, Attorney Collins?
Yeah, I know.
Two years ago.
Yeah.
How many lots are we talking about?
We can, yeah, and we keep, it keeps changing, but yeah, this is a further reduction. The other thing that is notable, and then we can go to comments and questions, one of the other things that we did, again, because of the, to make the geometry work, is create four clusters that actually use some shared driveways.
Yes.
That shortens the roadway, so shortens municipal responsibility. I'll create an association in each instance that will bear the responsibility of maintaining those.
But you just said association for each cluster or for the whole?
Oh, for each cluster.
Really? Interesting.
And then, um, one of the comments that the fire department had, they had concerns about the widths of those driveways. Stan has already augmented that on the plan that you haven't seen yet.
Okay.
Logistically, I want to tell you, we have a meeting next Wednesday over at the DPW for the engineers to hash out some drainage questions. When you go through the very comprehensive review that Green did for you, the meat of what's left, most of the stuff has been taken care of, but the meat of what's left is drainage questions, principally down front. So I think we'll be able to walk away from that meeting next week with a sense of direction on finishing the drainage or the drainage calcs to the satisfaction of both Dan and Matt, but also to the gentleman from Green. And then we'll be prepared to come back and see you and discuss anything else that has to be discussed. Now, did I leave anything out?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I have a comment, but you can go first. Go ahead, Danny.
I have a couple of things. So can you just talk about the pump station?
Oh. Oh, I did leave that out, so, so forgive me. So originally, fifteen years ago, the site was going to be served by its own pump station and that would deal with the effluent, getting the effluent into the municipal sewer. When we submitted the preliminary plan a year and a half ago, we were in conversation with DPW about helping them re-engineer their existing one. We're actually back to dealing with our own. So the infrastructure is there, the basic part of it. So it actually will be on the site where it's shown, down near the street. It is subsurface, if I recall correctly. And it will deal just with this development.
So it's gravity to the pump station?
Gravity to the pump station.
And then force main out to
And then it connects into the existing force main that was actually installed.
Yep. Got it, thanks.
You're gonna use the pipes that you put in the ground
Yeah, yeah.
That's not gonna hurt ourselves. So I just have, I'm gonna just, sir, Chair, privilège, just a couple of quick questions, and I'm gonna open it up. The first is, you wouldn't happen to, is there any image available where we can see before and after from the preliminary to this to demonstrate how much?
Well, you know, I know that we had one.
Is that available?
I don't know if it's included in this, but you actually have one on the preliminary submission, Dan? There was one sheet that showed.
Be helpful to everyone to see the difference.
Yeah, it certainly speaks volumes on where we've
Mr. Chair, while we're pulling this up, may I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Hopefully, we haven't lost the affordable units?
I believe I'm down at two.
I think that's where we were before.
Yes, and that's correct.
Yeah, okay. And this is not to be decided here, but I'd like to see if we can't get also for the local preference.
Oh, and that would be fine, yeah.
Thank you very much. I think we're really pushing hard to come up with more housing.
Yes.
And we can talk about that later, Mr. Chair, if you want, but it gives people who live here a preference over other folks.
Do you have the preliminary?
Yeah, it's just, it's such a big file, it's loading.
Okay. While you're getting loading, I have another question, Counselors.
Yeah.
And I don't expect to have a clear, an answer this evening, but something I think we wanna talk about is the disposition of the remaining disturbed area outside the new building area. That is the old road, and then some of the piles of debris, et cetera. I think we need to have a conversation about some of that old stuff as well, and just what's gonna happen to it.
Yes.
Okay.
Dan, I think that one
I think you just passed it.
Yeah.
Is that, you can see the power line that runs through the middle of it?
Yes, so this is the power lines?
Now, everything is to the south of that.
Everything has been confined to this area.
Yeah, correct.
So this, so imagining that the road then is just kinda cutting in like that now?
That's correct.
Correct.
And actually, you can, if you go back far enough, there's another plan that we submitted that shows the approved recorded subdivision plan laid over this.
But it compared it to this.
It did.
So Danny, if you, actually, if you call up the AIR assessors GIS?
Yes, you are right.
The original subdivision?
Subdivision is on there.
Is that, all that line work is in there. So you can see that actually extends further back than even that interim, than than that that submittal.
Yep, you are correct. Because it was done such, it was already inputted into the
Yeah, yeah, Molly's been paying taxes on the lots.
Oh, there you go.
So, yeah, so if I may?
Please.
So this was the original approved subdivision going way back, almost up to this wetland complex here and coming around and down. The last, the previous submittal came to about here. So we pulled everything down.
You can't touch it.
Oh, sorry.
That wasn't you, that was Danny, but
Still scary for us to watch.
Yeah, so the site looped, the road looped here.
Right about there.
And now, everything, the loop is, we have a boulevarded entrance on this part of the double-barrel road, and then it wraps around and down, and it stays on the, with the boulevard.
And you've reduced the number of overall buildings from the last plan from around twenty-twenty, twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two, below the lines, to seventeen below the lines plus the pump.
Correct.
So this one has, this plan has thirty-five shown on it. This one Thirty-five buildings, this is seventeen buildings. Correct, yes, yes. Thirty-five lots.
Because we have duplexes.
And then there's some duplexes on there, so there's thirty-seven total.
That's right.
And then this one just moved on.
There you go, yeah.
Now, this one has thirty-four units.
In seventeen physical buildings.
Yep, seventeen buildings.
Yes.
That's correct.
So I wanna open up the questions around the table?
If I may start?
Please do.
A fair number of the questions that I have are, can be taken care of, I believe, within a meeting with the DPW, in reading the plans. I'm sorry. A fair number of the questions that I have for the proponent are related to, as I started reading the comments from DPW, abbreviations were missing, things were missing on the plans. I'm not throwing disparagement on you guys.
No, that's right.
You've started with A, we're at E right now, and some stuff still lives here from A.
Yeah, and that does happen.
So that's gonna get figured out.
That will.
So I'm gonna, honestly, Mr. Chair, I'm more than willing to hold my, at this point, I think they're gonna, I think it's gonna get worked out by the professionals, quite honestly.
In general, things like the stormwater detail, sidewalks, what they're made of, what the curbing is, I have an expectation that we're gonna get into those details at a later meeting, so I can, I can hold those.
Yeah, 'cause some of the waivers that are requested, we're gonna need to discuss them.
Absolutely, okay. Let me just briefly touch on the affordable units, 'cause I know Ken would be interested, and I think it's responsible to
Don't ask away.
Help me, Danny, because my understanding is that one in five units is required to be affordable?
No, so they don't trigger the inclusionary bylaw because, so, this is not considered multifamily development, it's an open space OSRD subdivision. And based on our, how ours works, it's not a requirement, but in the OSRD, there is a section that if you provide affordable units, then you can, you get a certain percentage of additional units. Yes, yes. So
We actually aren't asking for any of the incentives.
Correct.
Yeah, right, you don't want the bonuses.
Yes.
So far below the number.
No, so not ten-point-three, to, under the, under the open space subdivision, on ten-point-two. Can we just get the number, the correct number? It's actually ten-point-one, under the section
Ten-point-one-point-two, I think.
Uh, ten-point-one-point-five, it talks about density bonuses, and that's where it talks about if you were to provide affordable units, you get addition, if you provide certain open space and affordable units, then a maximum of twenty-five percent is added to the calculation. Our inclusionary bylaw doesn't trigger on this project based on how it is written, which is something the Affordable Housing Trust knows, and that we've been working on, we're going to rewrite on how the trigger works because of the way, the way our inclusionary bylaw reads, it states, so I can read it specifically, in, so, this section applies to, in, ten-point-three applies in all districts in any development for five or more townhouse or multifamily dwelling units.
Right.
So technically, two families are not considered town, multifamily or townhouse dwelling units. They're duplexes by themselves. Yeah, that's why we're gonna be rewriting the inclusionary bylaw and how it, the trigger word is. And there's a further discussion on inclusionary because though we like to see, and we wrote it the way we wanted it to, the communities around us are more attractive, so we're not actually able to attract units, and that's a secondary conversation altogether.
I believe that two-family homes are more affordable, lowercase a.
Yep.
So that's, that's to the good of this development, but that's, that is a really interesting exception because AIR broadly is trying to get to ten percent
Yes.
capital A.
Oh, yes.
Affordability, and this
It's just the way the bylaw is written
Right.
That is the issue here. Had that said, any development of five or more units, dwelling units?
Units, yep.
It's the specification of townhouse or multifamily, which in our regulations, it's its own separate from duplex.
I know.
Yeah.
So
But, to their credit, they are providing affordable
Yes, and I think, I think that meets the spirit of affordability. But I think it's, you know, it's unfortunate to not get ten percent and keep, keep the town at ten percent.
Well, if I could just say one thing, we'd happily throw in another duplex, except
We don't have anywhere to put it.
There's no place to put it, yeah. Really, I really do believe that right-hand side of the road needs to stay the way it is.
Yeah.
And I really hate to have another building that much closer to a right road down on the boulevard, and having, having a house on a boulevard
Yeah.
Would be a real pain in the neck for the people living there.
Yeah, 'cause there is no way of
Yeah, and I, I don't think we could fit it. I mean, we can think about that first lot. You can't?
No.
We would happily do it if we had the space, but I have to tell you, we really, this is compressed. It really is.
I like your point, I do, about affordability. As you know, I work on it very diff, very hard.
Yeah.
But it also
But these will, in a de facto sense, be more affordable than most of what you're seeing.
I think that's to the good.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's, you know, kinda part of the reason with that duplex change in our table of uses, things, you know, we've done.
Julie?
No, I'm good right now.
So I'll just, it's more of a comment than a question. You know, among the issues to be discussed are, would be the disposition of previously built infrastructure. And I noticed in the plans, we have some that are called remaining, that'll be incorporated, some that are called abandoned, and then there's a third category, remaining abandoned, I forget the third one, is filled in or something or other, or removed. That's the third one.
Removed, yeah.
So I just wanna say, I expect in future meetings, we're gonna have very robust conversations about that, just to set up, and I think you can anticipate that as well, that's gotta happen. And of course, we have to ensure it's, anything that would be intended to be reused, have to be carefully inspected, be sure that it's actually functional, and you know that.
And I know that Dan and Matt will certainly require that.
Yep, and our discussions with Dan, Dan and Matt, were that any, any existing infrastructure that is reused would be tested to the current DPW standards. So it's gonna be treated the same as if it was just installed.
Okay, good.
And if it's going to be abandoned in a place, it's gonna be slurry-filled and stuff like that?
Well-filled or removed, yeah.
So we don't end up with sinkholes and other dangerous things down the road?
That's right.
So it's best practices, again, to make it better.
Exactly.
Okay, good. Any further questions? I'm gonna open the, open this hearing up for public comment. I'm gonna ask that those who wish to ask questions or make a comment, approach the table.
We've got a chair.
We have a, we have a chair right here, we have a microphone, state your name and address. And I would just ask, as a courtesy to everyone, if someone who's come up before you has made your point, please feel free to simply say, I wanna add, you know, plus one to that comment. It's not just for everyone's courtesy to repeat the same things over. No, we could just say, yes, I wanna make a statement officially that I agree with that or what have you. Other than that, I, please, whoever would like to step forward to comment a question, please feel free to, Marion, come on up. Would you, Julie, could you get that microphone setup pushed over toward her, please? Okay. Hello, Ms. Dardot, how are you?
I'm fine, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm fine, and thank you very much for the opportunity to be here tonight to present my, my comments. And so, first of all, I want to thank, thank you, future chairman and the planning board members for, and the AIR Conservation Commission and Conservation Commission agent for the wonderful work that you have, have done to protect as much land as can be protected for conservation in AIR and to provide affordable housing. It's very important. So I want to just to thank Attorney Collins and, and David Molson and his family.
Unfortunately, didn't live to see it.
And I know he didn't live to see this, but I know it was his wish that more land be protected, and we're so grateful for the land that he helped to protect in Groton, which adjoins this property. And so it's really a very significant act, and it's very much appreciated.
It really is. The joy he's here in the spirit.
Yes, right. Well, we wanna thank the family, too. And so we're so appreciative that so much land now is proposed to be, to be protected, and which will provide, help provide for better water quality and habitat for wildlife, including nesting turtles.
Yes, yeah, that's right.
And we, we're just thrilled that, that so much, I think about a hundred and thirty acres, maybe, is that, that part of the proposal?
It's actually a hundred and forty.
A hundred and forty?
Yeah.
Oh, great.
Yeah, because the Allison Realty Corp. land that would be the separate gift, I think that's right around ten acres, and that's all the shoreline.
Right, well
About a hundred and forty acres.
This is the most significant piece of land left in AIR.
It is.
And so I just wanted to thank you all very, very much, and
Oh, thank you, Marion.
Thank you, Ms. Dardot, appreciate it.
Very kind. And thank you for coming to every single hearing.
Can she vote?
We have one more alternate seat.
Yes. You would be extremely well-served.
We've learned a lot from Ms. Dardot.
My name is Lori Nearing, and I've been active with an environmental group in town called PACE, People of Air Concerned About the Environment. And I couldn't hear everything that Marion was saying, but I think I wanna echo the essence of what she was saying, and that this feels like a really good plan for AIR. And I spent a fair amount of time at Rocky Hill and Groton, and I appreciate the beauty that's there, and having all this connecting property is a real wonderful thing for AIR. So seeing the changes that have been made over time, thank you. I'm curious about the houses that you're proposing. I haven't seen any pictures, now I hear they're duplexes.
If you drive over, next time you're in Groton, if you go down Umming Bird Lane, they'll be similar to those units that Dave is building now. They're gonna be a little bit different, though, in order to make the geometry work, but same quality of construction. So they won't be duplexes like we used to see back in the seventies, that's what you're seeing now, which is much more aesthetically pleasing than what you used to see.
And do you have a price range in mind? You said some of them are gonna be affordable housing, apparently. I'm sorry?
I apologize.
What was the question?
We're pulling up the other progress.
Yeah, Lori, what was the question?
I was wondering what the price range is.
I actually don't know.
No street view of Umming Bird?
In answer to your question, that I don't know.
Okay.
Prices, as we all know, have been an incredible moving target. The quality of construction will be similar to this development right here, which is an over fifty-five development. There's twenty-four units there on six acres. Some are duplexes, some are singles. So it'll be similar, it'll be a similar design to that. I don't know, I honestly, I'd be lying if I hedged a guess on price range. The last I'd be lying if I hedged a guess on price range. The last time I, and I'm going to date myself, the last time I answered a question like that, um, I said, we, you know, we're hoping to shoot for the high twos, and that was about twenty-five years ago.
Wow.
But yeah, that was about twenty-five years ago, and we really were hoping, uh, you know, to get to that point. I, I would tend to believe these are going to be in the fives and sixes.
Okay.
If they're comparable to what you're seeing elsewhere in town. Um, but I'm not sure. Yeah.
We're getting a visual on the big screen.
That's a single house, right?
No, that's not, that's a duplex. They look like a single.
Yeah, it does. It sounds interesting.
I, I would encourage anyone who's curious to take a, take a drive down there. What, what I've noticed is that it's actually kind of difficult to distinguish the two. They look very similar, the single family. They don't scream duplex.
They don't. It's a nice design and the same design. So that's one of the singles.
That's a single.
It's the one before it.
Yeah, one was one right after it.
And actually ironically, the duplexes show better and have a nicer floor plan. And I said that to Dave when he first did it. So that's what they look like. They are separated by the garage. Um, but the design will be a little bit, a little bit different to make it work for this lot, these lots, but, um, but it'll be the same designer, so it'll be comparable aesthetically.
You may have mentioned this, but are you on town water and sewer here?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Um, and, um, how would, um, would it be treated like, like an HOA in a condo that the people who live in those two separate units would share some kind of a monthly fee to fix things, the roof and stuff?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, so.
And that'll be a legal arrangement within the deed of the house?
Yeah, so in each, so there's going to be variations. I always have to make things complicated. So there'll be, so the few that are on their own driveway will be an individual association comprised of two units.
They'll be condos, right?
Condos. Um, the ones that are on shared driveways, I'll make one association for those six units that is the responsibility to take care of the buildings, plus the driveway, plus the grounds. Um, so variations on a theme, but in any event, there'll be an association that's responsible for the buildings themselves and the driveways. And, um, the last few that I've done, I actually also throw in the ability to augment what the town is able to do, should they so desire, because oftentimes, people like to see additional landscaping that the town is not in a position to provide, so I make it so that they can do that.
Okay. So just to elaborate, where there's three units that share one driveway, all three will be.
That'll be one association comprised of six units.
So one of them needs a new roof, the others don't, all three
All three have to.
are contributing to the plan to build.
And there's reserves that you set aside every month.
Interesting.
That are based on the life expectancy of the different components.
Okay, interesting. And is that, um, uh, where the lines are close together showing, is that land, is this going?
That's topography.
I, I, right, yeah, but is it going down or up? It's going down, right?
That's down, yeah.
Okay. So you have a good view where those houses are?
This is all going to be buffered.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Okay.
And most of them do back up to very nice views out the rear. And these units.
Okay.
Dave did the same thing over on Hummingbird. When you walk in, they all just have this beautiful woodland view, except for the few that are in the middle.
Okay.
But if we could have had them all the way around the edge, we would have. But it does work and they do have a sense of, a very good sense of privacy.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Lord.
Thank you for your kind words.
Go to the town for planning eventually, that's once it gets up that strip.
Yeah, the boulevard, yes.
Yeah, the strip, the boulevard, yes.
That'll be maintained.
Yeah.
Even the grass in the middle?
Yeah.
Okay, because DPW didn't like that. Okay, all right. Um, yes, please, come on, welcome. Sorry, if you'd state your name and address, please.
I'm Joanne Quinley. I live on Stanish Avenue.
Yeah.
Where we are flooded out all the time.
Yes.
And to watch you put that road where they're going to come in and out right opposite ours.
Well, it's moved now. It's away from yours.
Okay. That wor- worries us. It's been.
Well, I know, and I talked to Jerry about that probably fifteen years ago.
I know.
So he's moved it, Stan has moved the road.
Can you show it?
Closer to Snake Hill Road from where it used to be.
Okay.
Principally to address that.
Yeah.
One of the other problems, though, is they were, with the best of intentions, there were two catch basins installed on the road.
Yeah.
That actually at a lower gradient than the, the, the area that collects the water, so they were overflowing.
They were coming out.
That's right.
Disers.
As they would, because they were at a lower gradient.
Yes.
We're going to talk about that with the DPW next week. I personally think they should be eliminated. Um, and I think the world would be a better place. Um, but it, we did, we'll be discussing that next week.
Yeah, because that's, you know, we've got some nice homes down there.
You too.
Our, our, the beach gets washed out all the time.
Yeah, and it comes right into your yard, I remember.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
It does.
Um, but we did move the road, so that actually won't happen.
Yeah, okay.
Tell Jerry I'm sorry he didn't come and that I was asking for him.
I will, I will. So that was our, uh, one of our discussions, because it's a narrow road.
Yes.
With two houses on each side.
Yeah.
And it's, you know.
And I believe that, that the DPW also installed some, uh, Cape Cod burn a- along this, you know, road to try to, uh, help with it. I know it's, it may not do the complete job, but it's, it at least does try to retain some of that water back as much as it can.
We're repairing all the time, so.
It looks good right now.
Doesn't it look better? Yes. So we maintain the road because it's private.
Yes.
So, you know, we've been maintaining it, but, um, when I saw that, I went, oh my God, not more water. So, all right.
We did move it away from you.
All right, gentlemen, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And, um, just, uh, one thing in response to that comment about water is that the, the infrastructure for the road that's been built hasn't been installed, so there aren't the normal catch basins that would catch and don't direct runoff. So everything that's been built is now, water's now running down that instead of being caught in increments. So.
Yeah.
So the, the overall design of this will, will drastically reduce the amount of water flowing off, off the site in general.
Yeah, yeah, good.
In fact, you can't get your stormwater permit unless you can demonstrate your ability to do that a- a- as reviewed by DPW.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Okay, say hi to Jerry.
Bye.
Wouldn't anyone else like to, to ask a question or make a comment? Okay, um, I think we need a continuance now.
And I would think the second week in, the second meeting in.
Yes, because you heard the issue before, yes.
But also, I know that we're going to be doing some more revisions, wanting to get them to green, and that should give us enough time for them to be able to, you know, come back. I wonder, and again, I know that we'd be paying for this, if it would be possible to have, uh, I don't know if it's Mr. Thorne that'll be coming next week.
So he will be at the meeting.
But could he come to the next planning board hearing too?
I, I can talk to him about having him attend, yes.
And that way.
The twenty-fifth?
Yeah, and that way would all be, because I, I think.
That would be great.
You know, we're down, we're a very short list of stuff we have to wrap up, and I think it would be nice to have everybody in one room at one point.
Yeah.
Okay.
If you're all set, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, I'd love a continuance, please.
I'd like to move for a continuance, and I should know the name of this. Offright Road Stratton Hill Project Map Six Parcels 1, 2, 3, 7, 8, 11 through 55, Divinity Subdivision Open Space Residential Development Plan for, to our next planning board meeting on, I'm sorry, to the next, to the June twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-four Planning Board Meeting.
Thank you.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing on, Julie?
Yes.
Nathan?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Chair votes are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jeff, by the time we finish with this, you, you'll be able to be an auctioneer.
He's already almost there.
Developing that speed, you know?
Yep.
But thank you all.
I, thank you, but I slow it down for you guys.
Marion, what's up? What's up, Marion? What, what's happening?
Oh, thank you, Marion.
Thank you. Hey, great.
We'll see you in a month.
We'll see you in a month. Stay cool, literally.
Yes, okay, we'll do it after. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I actually have to step up for a few minutes. I need to meet with Marion and her son about something.
Okay.
You can, you can leave without me.
Okay.
I'll be back.
Um, Danny, you want to give us some updates and, um?
Yes. So, um, seventy-seven Fitchburg Road, this is the, um, old, the, the car dealership, the used car dealership on, um, Fitchburg Road. It's on the right-hand side.
Yeah.
There is a portion of the building that is currently not being used and it's going to be, uh, used, uh, for ABS, who is at thirty-two Fitchburg Road. They're the ones who create these big, um.
They had the fire next to the funeral, across from the funeral home.
Yes.
Yeah, I know, yeah. I think what they make, but they make.
They make, um, these oven pans. They, they make all these like, uh, it's very high-tech.
So this is a change of use thing?
Yes, yeah, so they have, um, they're taking over that extra space, um, because, you know, they're expanding and they're just, they don't have enough room in their current used building. Um, so they're going to be coming to site plan review just because of it's a change of use for the, the, um, space. Um, what's the, excuse me, what is the address for the? The new spot is seventy-seven Fitchburg Road. Their old, um, their, well, their current space, which is, it's thirty-two.
That's where it is?
Yes, 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 just in front of the U-Haul.
That's what I'm thinking. Okay, got it.
Uh, their, their current space that they have is thirty-two Fitchburg Road. They're still going to keep that. It's just, this is an addition.
Uh, Zero Scully Road?
Uh, Zero Scully Road, uh, we met, uh, with GPR last week and discussed, um, uh, the project. It was, uh, we had our, uh, pre-application meeting, Charlie and I. Uh, we met with, uh, uh, GPR on this. We, they're hoping to be making a submission, uh, soon. They have progress prints. They were pretty, pretty close to being ready for submission. Um, so, uh, that's a proposed use of a sprinkler, uh, maintenance, uh.
Fire, fire sprinkler.
Fire sprinkler, yes, exactly. They'll basically, so they basically do installation of fire sprinklers.
Okay.
And they also watch, um, the systems for sprinkler alarms.
Okay.
Uh, so that'll be, uh.
Interesting.
Yes.
That's new, that's new.
New construction.
Yes, new construction.
Because it is new construction, right?
Yep. And, um, you'll be.
That wasn't part of the, so that's different from when, when we did the site visit. This is a new thing. This is a new, new addition. Okay, interesting. New wrinkle to this.
It's a pretty small footprint. They're keeping it too. Uh, they do have to go to add, uh, to conservation as well for an NOI.
Okay.
It's adjacent to the, um, the facility.
Yeah, Shebley Hill, Shebley.
Oh, boy, yes, indeed.
Yes, yes. He was out on the site and he's, actually, the owner was.
Oh, was he?
Yes. He was the firefighter from New Bedford.
Oh, no kidding.
So he's the owner.
Yeah, that's an interesting property. Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, I thought we signed the zoning map.
No, so, uh, the zoning map is, um, we have to sign it in, in a public meeting.
Oh, can we do that tonight?
We can't because Ken is not here, so we will have, that's why I had it originally to be done today.
But it can't be.
Ken told us, couldn't, he was, he couldn't come, so now.
Everyone has to be here at a public meeting.
Well, so that's, I'm gonna, I'm gonna double check with town council just to see if you guys can individually just sign it.
Typically have really good atten-, like, in fairness.
I know, it just happens to be the last couple of weeks. I mean, it's the summer.
Overachiever syndrome around here, but.
It's the summer, so I get, you know, this is bound to happen. Um, MBTA zoning.
Yes, my favorite topic, yes.
So, um, actually, I was hoping Jeff would be here.
You know what? Nathan, could you tap Jeff? I know he wanted to help Marion with something, but we're going to need his votes on the minutes.
Yes, so, and I want to touch on this just while they take it to his.
Yeah, that's fine. Like the hot hangout out there.
I know.
You know, we haven't seen Ruth in ages. Ruth, um, not met.
I said, I actually, I know, I said that to someone. I was talking, actually, that's not fair. I talked to her at the Devens meeting, journalist. Yeah, I talked, within a few weeks ago, I would say.
So she's okay?
Yeah.
All right.
Right before the election, um, we missed newspapers.
Sorry, Mr. Chair.
No, no problem at all. So we just need you in here for the MBTA zoning update in the meeting minutes.
Got it. Uh, we can't zone, we can't sign the zoning map right now. We have to have everyone here at a meeting. We need Ken, everybody.
Ken and.
That's fine. So MBTA zoning, uh, just wanted to update the board so that everyone knows as to where we are. Um, two weeks ago, three weeks ago maybe it was, we, um, I, I had a meeting with Alan, Alicia, um, Jonathan and Ken, uh, just to talk about the MBTA zoning. Um, we, we had a meeting with town council on, um, how we were going to be addressing, uh, the MBTA zoning. And out of that meeting, what we came out was, as opposed to going through the form-based code and making all these changes, or creating a new site plan review specifically for MBTA zoning, we're going to just create an overlay district that just, I know, that just goes over the form-based code and it's only specifically for MBTA.
And I share that exasperation, but compared to the alternatives.
I'm, I'm, I'm going to offer something.
Yeah.
Okay? I can be convinced if at some point in the future, we do a bot, we do a serious relook.
At what?
I, I, I don't like overlays.
Yeah.
Oh, and, and I understand that.
So, so I'm just going to say that now because they get confused. I got here because our zoning bylaw was all messed up with quote-unquote kind of overlay thing.
So I, I let me get into the, the reason.
We don't have to go into detail. I appreciate the details now. We have time. We've got to get it done.
Yeah, and, and so, just so that everyone knows why we're doing this, the MBTA zoning as an overlay district. MBTA zoning has its own type of review.
Yes.
They call it a developmental plan review.
Yep.
It's not site plan review. It's, you can't require special permits.
Can't require those.
You can't require certain types of reviews that are within our site plan reviews, uh, regulations. So basically what's going to happen is this overlay, which is only going to encompass the form-based code, will specifically only be towards multifamily housing.
Exactly.
So, and within that, um, regu-, the bylaw that we're going to write for the overlay district, um, there's going to be specific callouts to sections within our bylaw and site plan review regulations, as well as other, you know, sections in our bylaw, like special, like floodplain overlay district, um, earth removal, stuff like that, parking, that will all be referenced within our, uh, the overlay district, but not require a special permit for it.
Okay.
We had a meeting a couple of weeks ago on the, one of the templates that we were using, and we went through a lot of the comments of, on basically what's going to go into it. We looked at several different drafts from different towns. I've started working on updating the draft that we have now, and starting to input a lot of those regulations that we want, a lot of the, you know, requirements that we want within it. We're going to be, I'm going to be reaching out to the, to the members again to reconvene and just kind of go through, because I gave them some homework as to figuring out through all those drafts, drafts, zonings that they, bylaws that they have, which of the regulations that were referenced in those do they like that we can carry over to ours? So we're going to be reconvening, hopefully, within the next, you know, week or two.
So in short, the overlay district is going to get us to 1 in 10, not 1 in 5.
Yep.
And 1 in 10, we recognize and understand from the economic, the economic impact statements that are done in other towns is something that will give us more and more affordable housing, because it doesn't price out affordable housing compared, we're in competition with other communities, we should be as attractive as them.
Well, frankly, it's the state putting pressure on us.
I said it a different way, exactly, and I want to be in compliance. Our town is well managed.
We need to get it done.
Our town is well managed financially. The fact that we're, that we were one of the first to be in compliance, and then this all happened, and we became out of compliance, is a little annoying, but that's okay. We almost got 1 in 5. We almost got 1 in 5.
You know, just so that you know, it's possible another thing may pop up.
That's true.
It can happen, and I know that, but... The advantage of an overlay is then you can just slip it into the overlay. Yes. In the interest of keeping it simple, KISS principle, for, if the intent is to encourage development and to reduce barriers, so I guess I would request, and I think I'm directionally correct with Jeff here, if I understand, that as you template, as you come up with a template for this overlay district, if at all it makes sense to fold that into the Form Based Code and everything, so that, because I think the intent for the Form Based Code for air is to encourage development, so if we have things that are impeding that unnecessarily, then, I think, I think I agree that we could eventually roll this all together. May I, can I just touch on that? The one reason we can't is because the Form Based Code allows for special permits. So if we wanted to roll into the Form Based Code, we'd have to remove the requirement of all special permits within the Form Based Code, and I don't want to do that, because that is, that includes use regulations.
That's a new Pandora's box.
That's a whole Pandora's box.
So if I may, in short, we have two types of zoning in this town that don't exist in most other parts of the Commonwealth right now.
Correct.
We were ahead of the game. It's kind of biting us in the backside right now. I agree that, I agree that going to a higher density townwide makes sense. I don't think that's, this is the hill upon which we should write that down.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm just saying, you know, if we can be moving towards less regulation, simpler codes to understand and encouraging, and encouraging development, so that future volunteers in the town can ramp up to this position and want to serve all to the better.
Yeah, and just so that you understand, like, so...
We need to wrap this up.
I know, I know. We'll wrap this up.
We want to get these votes and let's get out.
We did really good tonight.
We're so close, guys, we're so close.
This, the only reason this is coming up as an overlay district now is because of the new changes that came since, that we found out in March, at CPTC.
An unwelcome surprise.
And did you guys know that Governor Healy appointed a new director of the MBTA zoning law today?
Great.
Just so you know. I'd like to move to approve the minutes from April 9th, 2024.
Second, I seconded. Any discussion? Julie?
Yes.
Nathan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chair votes aye.
Move to approve the April 23rd, 2024 minutes.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Julie?[1786.02]